Call to order the regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee at 6:31 PM. Hello, everyone, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance so you guys can feel free to mute and follow along with me. I'm excited. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. So first on the agenda is public comment. I have received no request for public comment tonight. And so we'll move forward into the consent agenda. And I think I will ask Mike to go ahead with that motion.
Oops, I was halfway into my, uh, my motion. I got a little notification, I'm sorry. I moved to approve the consent agenda of March 15th, 2023, containing the draft meeting minutes of March 1st, 2023, and the warrants of March 17th, 2023.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Go ahead, Scott.
I just, there's just a typo I think needs to be corrected under the, um, item E of new business. The, the motion doesn't have the amount from Clinton Savings Bank in it.
So you said that the, uh, letter E does not have the amount for the DECA donation, is that what you said?
Yeah, if you look under the motion, it says Mr. Horace moved to accept the donation in the amount of, and then it's got a bunch of zeros.
Yeah.
Got it. And I think that that was a result of us kind of breaking these apart and not taking all of them. And so that should probably say $2,000 if I'm not mistaken.
It's 3,000 up above.
If you go back.
Savings Bank, 1,500 from Align Credit. And then one of the $500 um, donations we were holding out, is that right? Can you guys remember? Go ahead, Kirk.
I'll defer to Mr. Mulcaren.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so the school committee at the time accepted the 3,000 and the $1,500. So the 3,000 from Clinton Savings Bank, the $1,500 from Align Credit Union, and the school committee held on a $500 donation from Eastern Bank and a $500 donation from Workers Credit Union.
And so that was largely until you guys could provide us with more information on the conditions of those two donations?
And we have that prepared for later on the agenda this evening, correct?
Fantastic. So if, um, we could just make sure that the, uh, minutes are amended to include where that that typo is fixed to add a little three before that zero, zero, zero?
Do we have the 1,500 as well?
It's, uh, it is in there. Um, but actually the motion should not read 500 from Eastern and Workers Credit Union. So that should be, uh, we should strike that from the minutes. Yeah, is, uh, is Alita taking our notes for us tonight, Kirk? Yeah, okay. Thank you, Alita, for making that.
Anne Marie took these, so I'll get, I'll get them from Anne Marie and get them corrected.
Thanks. So, so lovely to have you here, Alita. Thanks so much. Um, all right. So any other discussion on the minutes or the consent agenda as a whole? I'm gonna take the vote. So Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Uh, myself, yes. Shondor?
Yes.
Uh, Brett?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, for that. Thanks, Scott, for that catch. Um, for the school committee chairperson update, there's nothing, uh, beyond other agenda items that I have to share with you guys tonight. So I'm gonna move right to the superintendent's report and turn it over to Kirk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, School Committee. Um, I know we've become accustomed to, uh, having some, some long, lengthy presentations as of late, and I'm gonna deny you all that pleasure this evening. I'm sure you're, you're gravely disappointed, but, um, we do have some brief updates and, uh, we're gonna begin uh, with a couple of celebrations. I first would like to introduce to the committee, uh, Mr. Scott Blanchard. He's in the room with us now. Mr. Blanchard is currently the Assistant Principal at Mary Rollinson Elementary. And last week he was announced as the next principal of Mary Rollinson Elementary. We are extremely excited to have, uh, Mr. Blanchard be our principal. And I just want to share with the committee uh, that, uh, I'm very grateful to the Mary Rollinson faculty and staff and community for participating in the search process for this. In the end, it, there was an overwhelming groundswell of support from the community, uh, from the faculty and staff, uh, which will set Mr. Blanchard up for success. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Blanchard to just offer a couple of words to this committee and the community. Mr. Blanchard?
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. Um, thank you to the school committee for having me here tonight. Uh, I, it, I'm sort of overwhelmed and, and very humbled by, um, all the support I got through this process and, and, um, very, very grateful to have this opportunity to lead Mary Rollinson Elementary School, uh, in the next phase of our, uh, development and growth and, uh, yeah, I'm super excited about the work ahead and, um, I'm looking forward to, uh, to, to working with you all. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard, and we look forward to some great things ahead from you. So have a great night, Mr. Blanchard, and, uh, we'll see you at work tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Um, and, uh, before we, uh, uh, get into, um, uh, the food service update, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Friend as, uh, Assistant Superintendent Friend has a very important announcement and introduction she would also like to make to this committee. Ms. Friend?
Yes. Yes. I am so excited about this. Um, I have the privilege of recognizing one of our fine Neshoba educators this evening, Jaclyn Macharia. Ms. Macharia is an eighth grade math teacher at the Luther Burbank Middle School. Welcome, Ms. Macharia. Ms. Macharia was recognized last week as a Massachusetts level finalist for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. That's P-A-E-M-S-T. This is the nation's highest honor for teachers of science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and computer science. Ms. Macharia was recognized as one of three mathematics and computer science educators in the state of Massachusetts. The award recognizes those teachers who have both deep content knowledge of the subjects at which they teach and the ability to motivate and enable students to be successful in those areas. This is a highly competitive and prestigious award involving a complex process and evaluation against the five dimensions of outstanding teaching. It also included a video session, written narrative, letters of recommendation, and a deep reflection. Recognition begins with a nomination. In this case, Ms. Macharia was nominated by one of our Lancaster families. I was privileged to call this family this afternoon to thank them for their nomination and to hear a bit more. And what a pleasure it was. This family has had three children in the Neshoba Regional School District with one of those students currently in college. They attribute the trajectory of their children's mathematics, success, and foundation all the way back to Ms. Macharia in eighth grade, where they told me that she not only established in their children a deep mathematics conceptual foundation, but more importantly, she built their confidence as thinkers. She understood their potential and she never gave up. When I thanked the family for going above and beyond with the nomination, which included a lengthy letter on their part, the father explained that he wanted to give back and that the recognition was very well deserved. Well, we couldn't agree more, and I personally couldn't agree more, and we are infinitely grateful. The next step for Ms. Macharia, she will be recognized at a celebration in May in Massachusetts. And she has been moved on to the national recognition phase where the National Science Foundation will select one of three Massachusetts state finalists to the White House. Nationally, the president may recognize up to 108 exemplary teachers each year. What's also next for Ms. Macharia? Well, she's going to return to Luther Burbank, we hope, and continue doing what she is doing, teaching math and doing a mighty fine job at that. We are beyond honored to recognize her this evening. I love that smile.
That's fantastic. Thanks so much, Laura. It is so great to meet all of our amazing educators, but Ms. Macharia in particular. So I would love to hear from you.
Thank you. It has been such a privilege. And I am humbled to serve the children of Lancaster. I've had great support from the administration. I've had great support from the administration of our school and the administration of the district and also from the team that I work with. I couldn't ask for a better place to work and I'm so grateful. I know, I, as I've said before to Kirk and Laura, I am blessed to be in Neshoba Regional School District. It's been many years and I couldn't tell you, I, there's not a year that I, I look back and I think I am so thankful to be here. Thank you all for recognizing me. I appreciate it.
Madam Chair, um, I, I got to work with Ms. Macharia on the visioning work of the new high school. And for three days, uh, we were partners in arms during that process. So I am extremely delighted um, that she has been, uh, served this honor. So congratulations, Jackie. So moving on, you bet. And moving on to the final, uh, piece of our update today, yeah, Mr. Mulcaren, we'll go ahead and give an update on food service.
So thank you to, uh, the school committee for the opportunity this evening. I feel like, you know, while this is, I have good news to share. It's not nearly as exciting as what we just, uh, we just had as part of the superintendent's update. Uh, as part of the monthly Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials workshop, uh, we were provided some additional, uh, informational updates this, uh, this morning regarding the status of the potential continuation of the school nutrition reimbursement program, which essentially makes school meals available to all students regardless of any documentation of need. While the continuation of the universal school meals was not included in the governor's FY24 budget, there was a notice within the executive summary uh, of the budget that stated an upcoming supplemental budget will also commit funding to another year of the universal school meals program. So it is anticipated that other funding sources will be tapped to support this program for the next school year. As an additional note, Commissioner Riley's goals, goals for this school year include a health and wellness goal for all students. So there's a significant, uh, support from him, his team as well, and they were on the call today. Uh, we'll receive more updates over the next couple of months and we'll definitely have a final notice prior to the start of the next school year.
So Madam Chair, that may be in record time, the superintendent's report this evening. So with that, I'll entertain any questions or we can move to the next piece of the agenda.
All right, great. Thanks, Kirk. Thanks, Ross, and thanks, Laura. Really great report tonight. Um, for anyone out there, any questions for Kirk? All right, seeing none. All right, we're gonna move on to the next item on our agenda and forgive me, I, I do not know if I can see our student representatives on the call tonight. I don't think they're here, right, Kirk? Yeah, okay. That's all right, busy time of year, totally get it. Uh, we'll look forward to hearing from them next time. Um, so over to new business, everyone, and, uh, we have some more amazing Neshoba news to bring to you, and that is uh, the Tales of DECA. So I'll give it back to you, Kirk.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I am excited, uh, to inform this committee that our DECA students did a tremendous job at the state competition and 23 of our students have qualified for the national event. And, uh, as you all know from past years, uh, it's always a quick turnaround, um, around a six-week turnaround from that event to the national event. Uh, I know Mr. Mulcaren and I are in discussions with Mr., uh, Mr. A, Andropoulos and, and, and Dr. Boynton on how we can maybe bring these things out to the committee quicker because I am gonna ask for your vote tonight because of, of timelines and ordering the travel and, and doing all the processing. We won't have enough time between our April 12th meeting and the date that they're going right after April vacation to do that. So, um, we may, we may come back to you next winter and ask for contingency approvals in February-ish to, to approve their activities um, through the spring since this has become an annual tradition that our students are elevating to the national competition. Um, so with that, um, in your, um, package, you have an approval for overnight field trip and travel. Um, and I am looking, uh, for Mr. A. Let me scroll through. He is here tonight. Uh, yes. So if I can, uh, introduce to the committee, Stavros Andropoulos, uh, and Stavros, can you share with us, uh, uh, the exciting, uh, uh, work of the DECA team and what's next for them?
Yeah, thank you so much for having me, guys. Um, DECA is, um, has definitely set some new records this year. At states this year, there's always a theme, and then this year's theme was better than ever. And, uh, me and the rest of the chaperones were kind of joking around all weekend. Oh, it's such a cheesy theme and, uh, I, I guess I'm not the one, uh, that thinks it's cheesy anymore because it truly was better than ever that we've ever had. Um, in a typical year, we probably send, you know, 10 to 13, 14 students to nationals. Um, we've had as low as three, and I'm happy to report this is like the, the, the largest group we've ever had. We have, we're sending 26 students down to nationals this year. So, um, it is a blessing for sure. Um, kids are very, very excited. As you can imagine, this is Disney this year down in Orlando. So uh, lots of emails, lots of planning, lots of fun happening right now, but the excitement is, is pretty awesome right now.
Thank you, Mr. A. Appreciate that. And with that, we'll entertain any questions from the committee in your packet. You'll see the approval for overnight field trip and travel. And Madam Chair, we are looking for a vote for approval this evening.
Um, so that seems appropriate, uh, even though our protocol is usually to leave a little bit of time in between presentation and vote. Um, sometimes this needs to be overlooked and I think probably there's little objection within the committee unless I'm wrong. Please feel free to raise your hand. Um, Stavros, do you think it would be appropriate for me to share, um, the Canva that you created about DECA?
Yeah, I have that ready if you, if you'd like to. Um, but yeah, that'd be totally fine.
Yeah, so I have it ready to go and, um, would be happy to share that with you. Shondor, you have a, uh, hand?
Yeah, just, uh, the, the form references something that's attached in terms of an itinerary. And I don't see anything attached.
Okay, so maybe, um, Kirk, or Ross, you understand what's going on?
Uh, if it's okay with Superintendent Downing, I can fill in some of the, the pieces here. So the, the policy calls for, uh, approval, um, no less than 15 days. The next school committee meeting is within that 15-day window of them leaving for travel. So I'm currently working with Stavros on trying to best sort of support and plan from the business office and how we're gonna get these plans, um, you know, sort of brought within the right cost range and then also, uh, the, the payment mechanisms. So once he has that, that, um, the funding from the families and how, whatever other sources, um, are supporting that, uh, we can take care of it. So as far as an actual itinerary right now, it's TBD. And the reason for that is that he's still working with airlines and still working with DECA and also still working with potentially travel agents to do our very best to get this wrapped up as soon as possible within the scope of what, um, is really good operating procedure when it comes to, um, the business office.
Does that help, Shondor?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go right ahead.
I know that Stavros could provide at least dates and sort of like the window of, of when that competition is. Um, but as far as the actual timing of when they're leaving and the airline and those kinds of things, we're just not quite there yet because again, two days ago, uh, they got back with this great news and we had the snow day yesterday. So we're still working on it.
Okay, and then over to Scott?
Yeah, I just, I'm doing the math and I'm seeing that the student to chaperone ratio is roughly nine to one. And I'm wondering, you know, what's the typical student to chaperone ratio for things that are overnight with high school age students?
Um, I know for this particular trip, DECA requires an eight to one ratio and we fulfilled that. Um, so we were at 26 and, uh, we have three chaperones on this trap, trip. So, um, we, we just had some late additions, uh, two days ago that brought us from 23 to 26 and we got approval for that to, um, to be all right with, with DECA. Um, and that's something that I think we could definitely handle. We've, we've had pretty big groups in, in the past. Like last year, we had, um, 13 travelers with new teachers and, um, something that we could handle pretty well. So we're pretty confident and especially down in Orlando, I, I've traveled down there. This would be my fourth time going down. Uh, we actually, every year, the, the hotel itself, um, changes every time. I think we've got really good, uh, good, a good draw with where they put us this year. We're actually right across the road from where we're competing. So, um, we're pretty low travel, knock on wood. Once we get down there, we're, uh, there's a sky bridge that connects us to where we compete every day. Um, so we're pretty confident. We have a good group of people that have done it before. So we're looking forward to it.
All right. Uh, Mike?
Yeah, it's just from a, a process standpoint, I wonder if it makes sense to put this to vote today, but even, even though we've got, um, some of these changes pending, would it make sense to vote pending the, um, the changes and then kind of come back to the committee once everything has been, would that make sense from a, from a process standpoint?
Um, I think the problem is we won't meet again, um, until after they are gone.
Sorry, what, what, I'm sorry, what was the, the date then?
It's like all booked and, and like put into place. Is that what you're saying, Kirk? So the travel dates are April?
22nd.
22nd. And so by the time they book all of this?
Well, our, our policy is to, is to have committee approval 15 days prior to leaving. And so that's not possible at the April 12th date for us to be able to do that. So, um, that's why we're bringing to that approval now. But to your point, Mr. Horace, we'd be happy to come back to you with an update of the specifics on the itinerary, uh, once we have them.
Yeah, I think that's, that's all that I would, I would see.
So Mr. Mulcaren will make sure that there's an update, uh, once, uh, uh, Stavros is able to put together the specifics on that, that itinerary.
Um, I think too that just, uh, very quickly for everybody's benefit, I'll share something that Stavros' group made. And Stavros, did kids make this? Did you make this?
I actually made it. Uh, shout out to Mary Marotta, the ITS person who, uh, recently taught me how to use Canvas.
Yeah, it's pretty neat. Um, so there are the Neshoba students who went with you to the state tournament. Uh, it's pretty inspiring to look through these pictures myself. And we had lots of state champions listed here. Just gonna zoom back out. One of our student representatives to the school committee is there. And some of the winners who I think are going to nationals.
Yeah, we have a pretty good range of, um, we didn't have any freshmen this year, uh, but we have a good range from sophomores all the way to seniors.
So we can put these in the, in the meeting materials later, but, um, I think it's useful to see the kids who this will, uh, benefit. And top 10 in Massachusetts, it's pretty impressive. This is a really great program for all of our kids. And Stavros, this is open kind of to anybody who takes a business class or anybody who wants to participate generally, right?
Yeah, we've, uh, DECA's actually opened the restrictions on who can join, uh, a little bit more. It used to be you had to be currently, uh, enrolled in a business class. Now, as long as you've taken one at some point in your high school career, you're eligible for the rest of your high school career. So, uh, there's some kids that will take a class their freshman year and then they keep coming back for the next three or four years. So it's, um, allowed us to build quite the program. We had, uh, 210 members this year.
Wow. Uh, Amy Vessels? I think you're muted, yeah.
Muted.
Um, what did you estimate the cost is gonna be, uh, per student?
So the cost is pretty, um, fluid right now because of the flights, which is the biggest unknown factor. Um, for students, uh, they share a room four ways and that cost is a little under, uh, $400. Um, their registration is another $180. And then, uh, anything else above that is just the flight. So, uh, we're getting lots of different quotes. We've received many, many quotes over the last few days. We're processing through that, but, um, we're also fundraising. So there's a lot of variables at play here. Anything we could fundraise brings it down as well. Um, so we've asked parents to, to make a deposit of $750 soon to at least cover the flights and any really upfront costs that we're gonna have very soon on the horizon. And, uh, we told them to hold off on a total amount until we, we got all those final costs, uh, hammered down.
All right. Any other questions? All right, so, um, Kirk or, uh, I'm sorry, Kate, was that a hand? Did I miss you?
I didn't put up my golden hand. Yes, Madam Chair, if, if I may.
Yeah.
Stavros, um, DECA, the organization, gave us dispensation, right? Um, waived for the, um, the ratio because we had late additions. Is that correct?
Yeah, so our registration was completed a few days ago and then we received notice that a, a couple more, uh, students had received a bump. So what a bump is, is when a student from another school that had qualified, uh, decided to turn down their, their spot. So we got a couple other students that joined for that reason. And when we did, we already had completed our registration and when, uh, we had three more, um, in the group, uh, we, we got a waiver from the Mass, uh, State Advisor. Her name's Donna McFadden. Um, so we asked and received that permission. Um,
All right. So Kirk or Ross, um, what do you, what are you looking for in the motion? Um, just give us an indication before we shoot in the dark here. No worries, Kirk. Take your time fighting that cold.
Those of you that have been in meetings with me recently know that I'm, I just can't kick the cough. Um, so excuse me. Um, I think the motion is to vote, uh, approval of the overnight field trip, uh, to Orlando for, uh, the Neshoba Regional High School DECA team. Um, and can you, uh, Mr. Andropoulos, uh, give me the specific dates on that as well?
Yep, we'd be leaving on Saturday, uh, Saturday, April 22nd. And we'll be returning on Thursday, April 27th.
Okay. Um, so I'm gonna take a stab at the motion. Uh, I moved to approve the overnight DECA trip to Orlando, set to take place on April 22nd, 2023 to April 27th, 2023, with details pending to be shared at our next meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Sharon. Any questions, further questions? Yeah, Maureen?
Um, sorry, just was realizing the dates. It doesn't matter that we have, uh, school vacation week that week, right? The chaperones can still go and everything?
Yeah. I'm available.
That was it.
Okie doke. Mike? Golden hand?
Yeah, um, sorry, am I, I'm unmuted? I can't even tell anymore.
Yes, you are.
Uh, I'm wondering, again, I, I don't, I don't wanna, Stavros, I'm sure you don't wanna come back, uh, anymore than you have to, but I wonder if you could, or we could have some sort of update as to the results of, um, that competition. That would be, that would be awesome.
Yeah, put something similar together than what we did for states. Um, I would more than, be more than happy to do that.
That would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Our next goal is to win a trophy down there. So.
Yeah. Well, you have a pretty good, uh, bench going down with you, so.
Yeah, fingers crossed.
Yep. Um, all right, any other discussion? We'll take the vote. All right, I'm gonna start. Alright, I'm gonna start with Amy Vessels. Yes, myself, yes. Shondor.
Yes.
Amy Cohen.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Maureen.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Uh, Brett.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
And Joe. They lose Joe? Think so. Um, but uh, the motion passes. So we are so hopeful for you guys. Best of luck to you, Stavros, on this great uh, adventure.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody. Congrats, Stavros.
Alright. Uh, moving on with our agenda here, um, we are going to move on to uh, business and operations. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Kirk and or Ross for that update.
I'll, I'll defer immediately to uh, Mr. Mulcay. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Uh, do I need to share my screen? Um,
That would be great. If you have it, I could.
I have it right here.
Okay.
I had it right here. Sorry.
That's okay.
So uh, first in the business and operations update uh, for this evening would be the February operations report, which was also shared with the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee. Earlier this week, um, no major changes. We're trending essentially the same, um, you know, projected and hopeful savings that we may have had on our uh, warmer winter uh, sort of are, are starting to to wane, given the, the daytime temperatures and also, you know, the, the ten-day forecast still has overnight temperatures into the twenties. So um, where, where we might have thought we could um, expend less oil this year, we, we may not be under that, that um, that frame set. So however, um, we're actually uh, doing significantly well still. Um, and again, a lot of that's attributed to the salary savings that I've spoken about each month. Um, we'll continue to update the committee as we get closer. Um, and a lot of these things come into full in clear picture. I'm meeting with uh, our athletic director, Tanya Rich, on Friday, uh, right around lunchtime during the full day P D. Now that her spring season is essentially almost over, um, we'll be able to sort of see where her budget is at. Um, and then make our projections going into the spring season. Um, you know, again, she's incredibly busy and obviously just like our DECA, our DECA team, uh, her teams have been very successful this year. So um, and she's ramping up for the spring season. Um, and then the other thing too, along the substitute teachers, we'll have more clarity ala- around our long-term substitute teachers as we get into those final months. And we know who's, who's returning and who's still gonna be out and we can, we can look deeper at that line um, on any projections. But as of right now, this is where we stand with our potential um, budget versus actual at the end of the school year. As of the end of February.
Okay, guys, so maybe we'll pause there and just give everybody an opportunity to ask questions if you have them. I think Budget and Warrant Subcommittee took a look at this already. Um, but anyone else have any questions? Go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, so I think, do I, correct me if I'm wrong, but this looks like we're on track to replenish the amount that we withdrew from E and D to kind of help balance the budget each year. Is that what this is, is telling us?
Yeah, essentially, we are, we are, as of right now, um, it's approximately one point two. And the current proposal within the uh, budget bring brought forward for F Y twenty-four is one point two of an appropriation in our revenues.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, so thanks Ross for that. Uh, we can move on to the next item here, which is to wrap up the uh, DECA donation from the last uh, meeting.
Well, the good news is that I don't need to explain DECA because we had our expert in the room today and the, the success of the program. Uh, so presenting this evening a revised uh, DECA donation letter. Um, after the last school committee meeting, I went back and had a conversation with Principal Boynton and with Mr. Andropoulos regarding the, the concept and the notion of making scholarships from these donations. These donations are going to student activities funds and they will stay in student activities funds to be used for student activity funds. Any potential want or need uh, for scholarships, uh, there is dollars for scholars which they can be in touch with. So these donations are going directly into the uh, the DECA fund that's with the student activities at the high school and will be used for the national competition in April, which you've heard so much about this evening. There's a five hundred dollar donation from Eastern Bank and a five hundred dollar donation from Workers Credit Union.
Alright, great. Um, before the motion, does anybody have a question they'd like to pose? Alright, so I'll turn it over to Mike perhaps for the motion. I think you're muted, Mike. Sorry.
Okay. Um, I'll try it again. I will move to accept the donation in the amount of five hundred dollars from Eastern Bank and five hundred dollars from Workers Credit Union to be used to support the costs for students that have qualified for the national competition in April.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Alright, seeing none. My screen wider here. Alright, seeing none. Let's uh, take the vote. Let's see. I'm gonna start with Brett.
Yes.
And Joe.
Yes.
Uh, Sharon.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy Cohen.
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Alright, everybody. Thank you for that. And thank you to these two institutions for their continuing help with the DECA program. We appreciate that very much. And thanks Ross for that update.
Thank you.
Alright, everybody, I'm heading over to unfinished business. I wanted to um, start, if there's no objection, I'd just like to jump over the budget vote and let you all know that the warrant process vote, we are gonna actually um, push that to a future agenda as the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee um, requested us to do so. And so Mike, if you wanted to illuminate um, that further, please feel free.
Sure, and uh, I'm certain that I'm unmuted, so I'll proceed as planned. Um, yeah, so our, our, uh, the language that we proposed at our last meeting essentially remains unchanged, but I think coupled with that um, is a conversation of how often the, the um, number one, how often the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee meeting should occur so that we can properly review the warrants as per our charge on that Subcommittee. Um, um, and, and also um, just some, some general questions about warrant inquiry. And so I'm gonna reach out to M A S C, which is sort of the guiding body that um, um, that we defer to. Um, and once I have that conversation with M A S C, I'll bring that back to Budget and Warrant. And we'll come up with um, probably a recommendation on the signatures and the number and frequency of meeting times. So that's uh, coming up.
Okay, great. And so that's gonna be pushed off to a future meeting, so you can look forward to that. That leaves us with only one item on the unfinished business agenda, and that is the F Y twenty-four budget vote. And so as you guys know, the school committee requires um, two-thirds majority for this vote. So um, we're gonna break the vote into multiple motions, and that is because one of our school committee members has a small conflict of interest with voting for salaries, considering a close family member is employed by the district. So we always ask Brett to abstain from that first vote. Um, and so we pull the salaries and benefits out and then we vote on the total budget at the end, which Brett can participate in. Alright, so it's just a little note on process. So we are gonna do this in actually three steps. And Mike has the motions in his possession. Um, before we make the motions, um, Kirk, is there anything that you wanted to say? Anything more that you wanted to say about this?
Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity. Um, I would just like to thank this committee and thank our community for being engaged throughout the budget processes here. I also wanna thank um, our, our civic leaders that participated in the public forum. Uh, were we able to present the school district budget. And I also wanna uh, thank uh, you know, the participants all along the way, particularly our three town administrators uh, who we meet with monthly uh, to discuss the needs of our towns. So with all that, Madam Chair, um, um, uh, thank you for the opportunity and thank you to everyone who engaged in the process.
Great. Um, okay, so uh, is there anything that anybody else would like to um, say before we begin uh, the vote?
I, I did have one question, Leah. I don't know if this is the right place for it, but um, we had a discussion on school choice last meeting. Um, I don't know if that's necessarily like related. I guess it, it impacts the budget and so I'm, I don't see it on the agenda for tonight. Could you address why that is and how that will impact the budget?
We talked about um, wanting to waylay this discussion until we could have a little bit more study and presentation and notice for the public. So the way that it's going to work is that Kirk and Ross are going to bring us a presentation at the April twelfth meeting. Kirk, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
Um, and then the hearing would occur at the following meeting? Or are we gonna have the hearing on the twelfth as well?
No, we do the hearing on the following meeting because we need to have a decision made by May, May first.
Okay, and so the hearing and the vote would occur on the same evening?
No, we will have the hearing and on the twelfth at the beginning of the school committee meeting. And then you all will take a vote on school choice um, two weeks later at the next school committee meeting.
Okay, so as you can see.
Sixth, right?
Right. As you can see, that is um, to be determined. So that's not going to be decided before we vote on the budget.
Yep. So, and, and we would not project any of that uh, based upon the fact that even if we approve school of choice, there's no assurances of what would be coming in. So we couldn't even forecast revenue that would augment the budget anyway.
Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Just to follow up on Ms. Cohen's question. So um, when we talked about the choice issue before, um, I had sort of suggested that it might be appropriate to have a presentation on where would the district might be going on the issue of choice. But that would be in advance of the um, public hearing.
Um, yeah, I agree, Joe. So um, what I think you were asking for is that the presentation and the hearing be separated in time.
Yeah, because generally, when you have a public hearing, people are gonna comment on what is being proposed. And if it's being proposed at the, I mean, it could be proposed at the public hearing. I suppose we could do it that way as well, but um, generally speaking, there's always some form of e- advanced information or advanced notice to those who would be speaking at a public hearing. It, it might be something that the superintendent posted on the website uh, or sent out as a, as a part of his uh, weekly um, uh, updates and what have you. But somewhere along the line, you have to have some form of information that people can look at and then come and speak their mind on the issue of, of choice. So that was sort of my request.
Yeah, and I, I think um, I think that was a really great point you made at the last meeting. And even though this is kind of tangentially related to this agenda item, I don't wanna go too far down this road. Um, in the conversation about the planning calendar at the end of the meeting, let's bring this back up and we can kind of brainstorm um, that uh, to make sure that everybody is getting what they want. Um, but let's just suffice to say that for the budget purpose, we are not um, going to have that in advance of that vote, which is totally appropriate and fine, and would have been the case regardless. Um, any other clarifying questions before we get into it? Alright, so Mike, uh, are you ready with your motions and unmuted?
I'm ready with my microphone.
Okay, so let's take the first motion.
I will move to adopt the F Y twenty-four budget line items for salaries and benefits in the amount of fifty-two million thirty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I will second that. And um, this is the motion that Brett will abstain from, if that's okay Brett? Uh, so on the salaries and benefits line item motion, uh, any discussion? Go ahead, Maureen.
I've done mute. There we go. Um, I wanted to comment before we vote on this portion, um, because I plan on voting no on this portion of the budget. I know that um, per our school committee manual, the first priority when it comes to voting on the budget is the educational welfare of our children in, in our schools and of course, to protect the interest of our town taxpayers. But with that said, I know there are several concerns over staffing and retention in Stow schools at this time. So therefore, I can't vote yes on the salary and, and pension part of the budget. Um, but I do wanna say that the budget process was extremely transparent. There's a lot of good in this, in this F Y twenty-four budget. And I look forward to the um, coming spring months when we can hopefully assess all of the data that we're currently collecting and see if there's any better ways to support and address the needs of our, of our students. And that's all I wanted to say.
Okay. I think, can I just ask you a clarifying question, Maureen?
Sure.
Are you asking, are you taking issue with? I'm just trying to get my head around why you would vote no. And, and I think that the reason why, but correct me if I'm wrong, is that you think that the town should be offering more money for staffing?
I do. I feel like there is a need for additional staff, at least in, in, in Stow. Um, I can't speak to the other towns, but there is a lot of concern over the fact that, and I, I thank you for the transparency and I know that the coach role is going is a good step, a good move to make. It's just that with the with the transition, I think it's going to take away from our students because it's not gonna be something that people love at first. Um, and, and there's a fear that if the specialists are working through that transition um, and their time's not fully dedicated to the students, that some of the ti- time may need to go to special education. And we've already lost to, at least two special educators in center school alone this year. Um, so it, it's already currently um, a bit of a strain on the system. So I, I just feel like there's an additional need at this time rather than a, a change in role.
Okay, so, okay, so that I just wanted to make sure that I understood your objection is that you think that the town should be providing more money than they are right now. I would just enter that my comment on this is that I agree with you. I wish that we could pour way more money into our budget. Um, but I just don't think that the towns would pass it at town meeting. So if we, we have one town, we have, I'll have to keep in mind that we have one town right now that is already asking for an override for one point five million dollars, and that is Lancaster. And so the change that would be made at center would be made at all of the buildings. So we would be adding positions at all of the buildings for uh, fairness. And I just wanted to put it on the record that as much as I actually philosophically agree with you on wanting to add positions all over the district, that at a certain point, we need to figure out how to best use and most efficiently use the resources that we have because um, one of our towns in particular is, is in a tough spot right now. So that, I think that that's just my counterargument. As much as I, I think I agree with you, Maureen, I think that we also have to be really mindful of what the towns are able to do right now. Um, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I would um, I would just add, I think that we've had a lot of really robust conversations around um, this topic in particular over the past few meetings and I think that frankly, I think that those are really healthy conversations. And I think that there's probably no other way, no better way to carry out your role as a school committee rep than to represent your constituents. And so um, I, I, I really do. I applaud these conversations. I would also add, however, that there are lots of um, decisions that the superintendent and the administration makes that are discretionary within um, our budget. Um, and most of those don't even Within um our budget um and most of those don't even really come to our attention. Uh, and by all accounts, this this may have been one of them. I appreciate the disclosure. Uh, but we're really not, the the district or the superintendent did not come to us asking for a new role. Um, it was really just a shifting of responsibilities. And again. I've got that wrong. You can correct me, but um these kinds of things happen within the budget. And I think. It's important to take a. Broad look at what the budget represents, both with regards to what Ms. Berrito said. Uh, and also that um. You don't have to love. Every part of the budget. We just have to make. Uh, a decision on whether. The broad program is appropriate. That's something that we can endorse. Um, so I would just. Um, I wouldn't say caution. I would just say that that's the way that I view looking at a budget that I don't necessarily. Uh, uh, agree with everything, but um, you know, I look at the, I look at the big picture and understand that. There are certain things that our superintendent is going to be able to do. Within those line items um that don't necessarily have to come to the attention of the school committee.
Any other comments or questions?
Question. Oh, Amy, go ahead.
Well, yeah, this is, this might be a um. A silly question or stupid question. I'm just trying to come up with where the number. How how you pulled out this number for this motion? Where can we track that to?
Uh, Kirk or Ross, perhaps you can give me a better idea because I think Ross, you came up with the motion with Alita. Has given you the thumbs up.
I got it. So probably the um easiest way to look at is if you go to the existing workbook. Um, and if you look at the budget drivers, you'd be able to see that there's salaries for existing personnel. And then insurance and benefits.
I have that that. Look open and I'm. I thought I maybe would be slide fifteen, but I couldn't, I couldn't um. Parse it out of there. So. Budget drivers is that you said? I can look this up afterwards, but I I just. Okay.
And so Ross, you're saying that you took the salary line item and the insurance and benefit line item, added them together, and that is this number.
Yeah, it's not necessarily one line item because that's that's the the summary of of them all together. Um, so correct, it is the insurance and benefits combined.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for explaining that.
Um, a clarifying question, especially for the committee who is down. One member because of the um the need to abstain and also another member who was who was absent. Um, tonight because Karen had a graduate class that she had to go finish. So we need um an Alita, correct me here. I believe we need eight votes to hit the two thirds mark. Is that correct? Or some other person who's math oriented?
You need eight votes.
Thanks, Joe. Alright, so we need eight votes um for a two thirds majority. And I just want to caution the committee that at this moment in time. Maureen has said that she's going to vote this budget down. Which is her prerogative. Um, if anyone else votes no. It really does put us in a really. Interesting place, which I don't think this committee's ever been in before, to my knowledge. So I'm just um wanting to make everybody understand the the context, which I think is fair. Um, and you guys can obviously vote in whatever direction you choose. Uh, Joe.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, um. This is a gut check question. So. Given that we're down one member. And we have one member who has. Um articulated that they're going to vote no. I I'm I'm just playing devil's advocate here and um with respect to my colleague from Lancaster, Mr. Collins. Is there anyone in this committee that can enlighten me? I I have an opinion in this regard, but maybe somebody else can correct me. Mr. Collins's presence here. Pro- adds to the quorum of this committee. Generally speaking, if there's this type of. Uh, conflict, um, I I do believe a recusal may be required. I don't know if that's been been checked through our council or whatnot, but. It it when we go into an executive session to discuss these matters, generally Mr. Collins recuses himself. So in this regard, I'm wondering also if um Mr. Collins needs to accuse himself from this vote.
Do you, when you say recuse himself, do you mean just? Like leave the meeting, Joe?
Yeah, because his his presence here adds to the quorum. And when there's a conflict of interest, I don't believe that the the party in conflict. Can remain in the meeting because if if the if it was close, their presence there allows the vote to proceed and and. That may be a conflict on on his part. So I I'll leave it to Mr. Collins. I don't I don't want to step on anybody's toes here, but. Given that it's a close vote or it might be a close, um, you know, I'm trying to. Just play devil's advocate here.
Yeah, so Joe, help me out with the numbers here. Um. By virtue of Karen not being here, do you mean that she is reducing the quorum to ten? Her her absence. Absence reduces our number to ten?
Well, no, what I'm saying is that we need two thirds, is it? Was it two thirds of of those entitled to vote? Is it just two thirds? I think it's two thirds of those who are present this evening. Which I think that's where the problem was.
Well, if that were the case, then if Brett left, we would be reduced to nine, is what you're thinking. And then we would need. Six votes?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
As opposed to eight, so. Um, if anybody, I am going to look up the mass general law right now. If anybody else wants to jump in and talk, feel free.
Yeah, I had a, I had an observation about whether or not Brett actually does need to recuse himself from this vote. Cause.
What do you mean?
Well, I can understand why when we're in executive session and talking about things that could directly affect him that he needs to be excused from the meeting. But in this particular situation, he's not directly voting about something that will directly affect only someone close to him. It's a. Has a broader impact than that. And I think that the conflict of interest statutes have exemptions for a situation where it's. It's a broader impact and he's not directly voting to benefit himself. So I wonder if he actually does need to be excluded from this vote.
Um, Kirk, if you want to weigh in on this, I know that in all previous years, um, we've been advised to have Brett abstain or recuse himself. Go ahead, Shondor.
Uh, I just yesterday did the conflict of interest training from the state.
Nice.
And my recollection there was something that. It would have to. Um, at least ten percent of the eligible voters uh would have to be in the same boat as you for that exemption to apply. Which I don't think would happen here.
Wow, okay.
Anyway, we looked this up. I'm the lawyer.
Yeah, I think that we'll stick with um Brett recusing himself because that's what we've done all these years now.
Yeah, I have our policy up and it, the quorum is defined by the majority of the members of the committee. Not members present. What I can say.
Is that the two thirds threshold for the vote, though?
No, I'm just, I just did a search for definite, like to define the quorum itself, so.
It says the in sixteen B of Mass uh chapter seventy one. The amount so a portion for each municipality shall be certified by the regional school district treasurer to the treasurer of the several municipalities within thirty days. From the date of which the annual budget is adopted by a two thirds vote of the regional school. Regional district school committee. That's all I got.
Yeah, I don't think that's, Madam Chair, I don't think there's a requirement that it's, I don't think it's two thirds of those entitled to vote. I think it's two thirds of those who are present and voting.
Yeah.
Sounds ambiguous to me.
It like it doesn't. I I find nothing that says it needs to be a. A vote of those eligible to. A a majority, a two thirds majority of those eligible to vote. I do not see that.
Uh, are you reading sixteen B?
Yeah.
The first sentence says two thirds of all its members.
Well, it says two thirds of the school committee. And it doesn't say those who, like what constitutes the school committee on a particular night.
What sentence are you reading? The regional district school committee by a two thirds vote of all its members.
Oh, maybe I'm not seeing what you're seeing. Sixteen B, you said?
Yep.
Our school committee manual says as long as there's a quorum, it's a majority vote.
General law sixteen B, like Scott said at the very top, it says the regional district school committee by a two thirds vote of all its members. Shall annually determine the amounts necessary to be raised after deducting the amount of aid such district has received pursuant to section uh sixteen D. To maintain and operate the school district the next fiscal year.
And so to me, that says we need eight votes.
Yep. Um, so Joe. It's it it feels that way to me, too.
Yeah, but it regardless of what you need to able, it it still comes down to a question of whether or not recusal is appropriate, so.
Yeah, and when you say recu- recusal, you mean actually to have Brett lead the Zoom?
Yeah, he he couldn't add to the quorum. So, but I think it's really up to Mr. Collins and what he feels about it.
Brett, do you remember what we did in the past?
I believe I just abstained from that part of the vote, but I'd be more than happy to step out and. Come back in when you're ready for me.
Anyone else have an opinion?
I don't think his leaving the meeting adds anything or helps us in any, it doesn't accomplish anything. I think him abstaining is all that's necessary.
Okay, so I think I think I tend to agree with Scott, Joe. I think and especially because that's how we've done it in the past on Zoom.
Whatever you decide, I I just think it, you know, when it comes to potential conflicts, you want to err on the side of caution, so. You know.
Yeah, I mean, if he leaves, though, we still have, we have quorum if he leaves and um we still need eight.
But I'm I'm looking at this from the perspective of, you know, someone who may. Oppose our budget, so.
Yeah, yeah. Brett, what do you think? Airing on the side of caution, would you mind jumping out and then I'll text you to come back in?
Uh, I will see you in a few minutes.
Okay, thanks, Brett. I know you don't mind. Thank you. We succeeded in kicking Brett out, but we still have the same issue. Um. So we need eight votes, everyone, uh, just to be very clear. Um, and I'd like to, before we take the um real vote, use my um discretion here and just poll the committee. And could you just give me a thumbs up or thumbs down on the um camera if you are leaning toward or against the budget, for the budget? Against the budget?
Sharon, do I see your thumb?
I'm sorry. Oh, you're muted, Sharon. I'm sorry.
I'm confused. Which way are we? What are we thumbs upping for?
If you, I'm polling the committee. Do you support the budget or not?
Yes.
You support the budget? So hold it, hold up your thumbs, guys. I'm sorry to be annoying. This is a big deal. Okay. Alright, so in pulling the committee, it seems like we do have um eight votes, so I am going to call the vote. If there's no further discussion. Alright, so I will vote yes. Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Shondor.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Maureen.
No.
Joe.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
Okay, so the vote carries. For that first motion.
Uh, I'll make the second motion.
Um, I'm having Brett come back in. Do you mind just waiting one second?
No problem.
He went to get dinner.
Okay, Mike, you can take it away with the um the motion for the rest of the budget.
Sure, I'll move to adopt all other FY twenty four budget line items for excluding salaries and benefits. Non-salary operational and assessments costs in the amount of. Twelve million eight hundred sixty three thousand four hundred and five dollars.
And so I know that once upon a time. We talked about putting um this in the chat. I actually, the chat's been disabled, so I can't do that for you guys. But um I'm going to second Mike's motion. Do you guys have any discussion on the um other items here? I'll take this vote. I am going to vote yes. Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Shondor.
Yes.
Maureen.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Amy Cohen.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Uh, Brett.
Yes.
I think I got everybody. Alright, and so it is um our practice to then. Do a final motion, which um is a motion to adopt the entire budget. So Mike, I'll let you make that motion.
Um, not to throw a wrench in this, but um. Should. Should, should, is Brett voting on this?
So historically, he has voted on the whole thing. And um Alita, can you correct me if I'm wrong there?
I took these motions right out of the motions that were made last year.
And Brett did participate in the whole budget vote.
Yes, he did.
Okay, everyone. So that's a past practice we have.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, I'll move to adopt the total FY twenty four budget in the amount of sixty four million nine hundred and two thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. A four point three zero percent increase from the FY twenty three budget.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Scott.
Yes, I just want to say that while I am in support of this budget, I um. Hear what Maureen is saying about, you know, the staffing levels and. How much we're paying people. And I think these are conversations that we should have in June as the, at the start of the next session. And we kind of start laying out the plan for next year and laying the framework for the following year's budget in terms of. You know, what levels we pay our staff at and what that says about how we value education in this community. And how our staff gets paid relative to other similarly qualified people in other industries. And so. You know, I know that there's, I know we don't want our taxes to go up any more than they have to, but if we want to have the highest quality schools, we really need to think about. What that means from a pay and compensation point of view of our teachers and and if we're actually. Doing what's necessary to have the highest quality schools possible going forward. So. Like I said, I think that's a conversation for June. I'm supporting the budget as it is now, but I just want to plant the seeds for going forward, having the right conversations.
Thanks, Scott. Any other comments? Questions? Alright, everybody, it's the moment. So uh seeing no further questions, we're going to vote to adopt the whole budget, but as the motion indicated from Mike. And I'm going to start with Brett.
Yes.
Uh, Joe.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Amy Cohen.
Yes.
Maureen.
No.
Uh, Scott.
Yes.
Shondor.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Okay. So the motion passes. Uh, Kirk, thank you so much and Ross and Laura and your entire team. Thanks so much for all of the work, the tireless work that you've done for months and months and months. And indeed, the work does start almost immediately for the next go around, I'm sure. Hopefully you guys can all take a breather. Um, I mean, we're certainly not there yet. This is now going to go to the towns and town meeting where we need the communities to support this budget. And I would kind of echo what some of my colleagues have said here that we want to have the very best public schools and, um, in order for that to happen, we need to invest in them. And so, um, you know, balanced with that is us being fiscally responsible and listening to our town partners and recognizing the limitations of all of the households in our towns and across our neighborhoods. So it's a delicate balance indeed, but I think that, you know, you did your very, very best to strike it this time. So thanks again. All right, everybody. So, um, I think that we're probably going to get to subcommittee reports tonight. So that's exciting. Uh, we are gonna, um, go over to budget and warrant first and let Mike, um, give us an update.
Um, well, I gave you a good chunk of the update earlier in the meeting. Um, moving forward, I think our focus is now going to shift to having deeper discussions about, um, OPEB. Um, our next meeting will have that as an agenda item and considering, um, forming some sort of advisory to dig into OPEB, um, inviting municipalities maybe to come speak to our subcommittee to understand how they've managed that liability. Um, and so I think the shift, as I said, the shift is now going to be moving from budget discussions being the primary driver of our agendas to OPEB. Um, and again, there's more to come on the warrants discussion, um, hopefully at the April twelfth meeting.
Awesome. Thanks, Mike. Over to communication. And Sharon.
Communication is working, um, alongside the policy subcommittee right now, working on updating the school committee manual. Um, it seems like it's works as a really good fit for us right now because our other goal for the year was to create a resource, um, for committee members. And this ties into that really well. It seems like maybe we can, um, add the resources that we were hoping to, uh, create right into this manual through links. So this is, um, being really productive, I think, for both of those subcommittees.
That's awesome. So grateful that you guys are doing that. Thanks, Sharon. Uh, over to the school building committee. Joe.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, the school building committee met on, uh, March ninth and our next meeting will be April sixth at seven PM. Um, we also have a public forum scheduled for the twenty-seventh of this month that will be discussing a, um, design status update along, as well as, uh, early voting. Um, in regards to our last meeting, I would characterize our last meeting as probably being the first, so we call it minor bump in the road in regards to this, uh, project. Um, our designers had presented, um, a slide deck presentation in regards to a status update on the design. What has come to pass is that, uh, preliminarily, before we got to the schematic design module, um, the, um, district was required to submit what's called a preferred schematic report to the MSBA. That preferred schematic report intimated to the MSBA that what we were proposing to construct was a building of approximately two hundred and one thousand square feet. Um, what is transpired, uh, since we've entered into module four, which is a schematic design, is that our, um, designers have intimated and represented to the committee that there is going to be, or they suggest that there is a need for some additional square footage in the building, approximately seven thousand square feet. Now, what they have presented is a mixed bag of what are potentially eligible or eligible, possibly eligible and wholly ineligible, um, space additional requirements. So the, uh, committee discusses at length, we had a very lengthy meeting, um, on the ninth. And it was the consensus of the committee that the designer should proceed with the enhanced square footage designed for submission to the MSBA. I will let you know two things. One, it was not unanimous. There was some, uh, um, opposition to the, uh, additional square footage. But I would encourage all members to look at the meeting materials for March ninth and to look at page ten of KBA's presentation that will outline for all of our members, um, where the areas they're looking to enhance are and their eligibility or non-eligibility status. The one thing I would leave you with at this point is that there was two points to be taken from our meeting. One was that one of our members, uh, very astutely pointed out that in the grand spectrum of things, seven thousand square feet in a project this big is not that much. However, there is going to be a cost enhancement to our sending communities for this additional square footage. So, um, while I don't think it is going to rise to the level of any sort of major controversy at presence, it's something the committee members should be aware of moving forward in case anybody in their communities wants to ask about this regard. And with that, Madam Chairman, that completes my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Guys, feel free to ask questions if you have them. But the meeting materials are very informative for that.
Just really quick, what, what materials are we supposed to be looking at from the March ninth meeting that you thought would be helpful?
The KBA slide presentation.
The February twenty-three one. The first one, I see.
It's on the meeting materials for March ninth. Yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
If you look at, if you look at slide ten, that will show you where these enhanced spatial issues have arisen and what they're suggesting in that regard.
Great. Thanks, Joe. And Joe, just to clarify, they said even though these, um, the square footage has been added or will likely be added, there is a question over whether or not the square feet added will be reimbursable. It is likely that a good deal of it will be, but we just don't know yet.
Yeah, this, as I said, if you look at slide ten, it, it, it shows that the areas of the, where they're looking to increase the square footage are this eligible, potential ineligible and wholly ineligible. But there is an appeal process to the MSBA. So they can go back for the MSBA and they can say, well, generally why you believe this to be ineligible, we think it should be eligible because of X, Y, and Z. So, you know, it's not like it's, you know, we're ineligible out of the gate. But, um, I think that KBA wants the committee and our constituents to be aware that this is a potential area where there could be some additional costs added to the project that may not be eligible for reimbursement through the MSBA. And if you look at it, one of the areas of course is the, um, the auditorium and the administrative guidance offices. So forewarned is forearmed.
Right. Thanks, Joe. Maureen.
I was wondering if this changes the timeline at all. Does it cause any delays or are you, are we still on track?
To the contrary, it keeps us right on track. I think that if, uh, KBA had, uh, been given the, um, message from the committee that we were not, uh, we were not in favor of this enhanced square footage requirements, that they would have to sort of proverbially go back to the drawing board and look to cuts and spaces. But, you know, they're very keen to point out that, um, you know, a lot of this additional space is necessary as regard, in regards to the educational programming for the district. So in that regard, um, even some of the, one particular member who wasn't at our meeting, uh, and I'll, I'll mention her by name. It was, uh, Don Low, our town administrator from Bolton. I did speak to him in advance of this meeting. And, um, the one qualifier he had in this regard was that if it was in pursuit of the educational programming, um, it would be something that he himself would, uh, be in favor of. And, uh, just in case anybody cares, he did allow me to quote him. I didn't quote him at the subcommittee meeting, but I'm quoting him here tonight. So, Don, if you're out there, you told me I could do it. So I did it. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Very informative. So helpful as always. Um, okay, everybody. So moving on to personnel. Mr. Horish.
Uh, nothing to report this week.
Very good. Uh, policy. Let's see. Karen isn't here, but Amy Vessels, anything? You're on policy right? Yeah. Anything for policy that we should know?
I know. I think that Sharon covered it because we're meeting with them. So we're working together, both the committees. So.
Go team. Awesome. Uh, now to our advisory committees, audit advisory and Maureen.
Yes, we met with the auditors last Thursday. It was a great meeting. We have, um, a lot of recurring staff doing our audit. They're currently in the process of doing FY twenty-two audit. They gave us their plan, their timeline, um, told us where they were focusing. Um, and we do hope to meet with them in June or May-June, once a report is issued to wrap up everything. Um, and they'll summarize FY twenty-two audit. And, um, we hope to invite budget and warrants to that as well. I think last year in June, there was a productive meeting with, um, budget and warrants and audit advisory and the auditors. So we look to get some good information from them at that. And our next scheduled meeting is April sixth. So the minutes from our March meeting should be posted shortly thereafter and, um, the details of the discussion with auditors will be in that.
Awesome. Thanks for breathing so much life into this, Maureen. Really appreciate it. Uh, over to Dear J and Sharon. Anything new?
Dear J met, um, last week after the budget hearing and will meet again next week on Wednesday. Um, the working groups will, oh, be, they'll be working in the working groups next week on Wednesday on, um, two different, um, topics. So two different working groups. One is on, uh, essential questions for the equity audit providers and, um, the other one is on hopefully developing a, a decision-making tool that, um, will help us, um, in, when we are considering decisions throughout the district in, um, equitable decision-making.
PAC, Karen is not present. All right. So, and I don't think anybody else might have any information there. Okay. Um, over to the R-A-A-C. I am beyond excited to tell you guys that the warrant article for the new, uh, or proposed amended regional agreement is in the hands of our three town administrators. And they are collaborating to make sure that the, um, language is identical across the three towns. The documents will be available. Some hard copies will be available at the town meeting and we also have, um, it linked on the website so that people can access it electronically. And so, um, that's that. Yes. Uh, so it's, it's finally there and, and I'm really happy that we got it there. So. So I'll have to say about that. So, um, time is definitely on our side right now. Oh, Amy Vessels, go ahead. Uh, you're muted, bud.
Um, doesn't the, um, the, I don't know what it's called, the, the rule or whatever about us doing, um, remote uh, meetings, does that expire at the end of this month? And like what, how are we moving forward with that?
Yeah. So Alita forwarded something to Kirk and to me the other day that showed the governor has, um, proposed to extend the, uh, remote meeting rules through, I think, April of twenty twenty-five. Um, so any meetings after the thirty-first, correct me if I'm wrong, Kirk, meetings after the thirty-first will have to be all in person. Unless this is, uh, voted upon and all indication is that it will be voted upon, but we will keep you guys up to date on that for the April twelfth meeting, which is in person anyway. So, um, shouldn't be a problem. But Kirk, anything you want to add?
Yeah, that would be it. We're scheduled for our in-person meeting on the twelfth anyway. So the legislature has until April twenty-sixth if we were going to do a remote meeting, uh, at the end of April. But that is correct.
Okay, great. So I hope that is good news for everybody. Gives us, uh, more flexibility. Um, okay, guys, like I said, time's a little bit on our side. So why don't we look at the planning calendar? I am going to pull it up for you so that you can see it. And I know that school choice is something that we want to make sure that we do responsibly. Um, as you guys know, the fifteenth is here. Um, the planning calendar has us, I'm just gonna this down here. Hang on. So the planning calendar has us off on March thirty-first, which is very, no, not March thirty-first, March twenty-ninth, there is no meeting. Um, so that's exciting. You guys get a little bit of a respite. We come back together on April twelfth and you can see, um, what is here. Kirk, anything that you see right off the bat that you want to change or add?
No, Madam Chair, uh, reviewed this with the cabinet team this week, so we'll be ready for the elements that you see there. Uh, where, where you see the food service rates presentation, there's a question mark. Uh, Mr. Mul Karen updated the committee tonight on that. We're looking at if we even need to con to do food service rates. Um, because, uh, you know, if, if again, those are paid for, if we still need to do that. So we're researching that.
Very good. Amy Cohen.
Yeah, I thought that we were going to be approving, um, a calendar for twenty-five, twenty-six. And I don't think I see that.
Or twenty-four, twenty-five, you mean?
Um, yeah.
For like the following year.
Am I getting too far ahead of myself? Yeah, because I thought that that was a question you have for Marie, like, you know, weren't we doing this in two-year chunks? And I know that um, that's very helpful for families that we can plan that far ahead. So.
Yeah. Um, Kirk, I know that she did say that she was going to get that to us before the end of, uh, the term, but any update there?
I will check in with Ms. Doyco on that.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. And so I'm just going to put, um, a marker for you to say, um, uh, for twenty-five calendar presentation, something like that, question mark. Um, so, uh, with regard to school choice, and Joe, you can jump in here. I think that this is actually the way that we think or the way that we were suggesting it should be done. So I do see that the school choice recommendation or presentation from the administration will happen on the twelfth. The hearing will be scheduled on the twenty-sixth. And then the vote will be taken also on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I apologize. I should have checked the, uh, calendar, the planning calendar before I opened my mouth earlier in the meeting. So I apologize for that because that's right there. That's exactly what I would envision would be appropriate public caring process. So thank you, Madam Chairman.
Awesome.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Yeah, it's also my plan to get that out there. My goal is March thirty-first, uh, to the community and that address to the community on March thirty-first. So to Mr. Gleason's point, uh, people will have information, you know, almost two weeks before the next meeting.
Okay. And you say, when you said your, um, presentation to the community, Kirk?
Presentation to the committee, but I will share it with the committee, with the community two weeks before the presentation.
Got it. Okay, okay. Anything, uh, else? And I cannot see most of you. So in looking through this, anything else, just jump in.
I thought that the building committee was going to be having some joint meetings with, um, the school committee. Joe, do you?
Yes.
Yeah, that'll be in May. Be after the, um, the, the preliminary schematic designs have been submitted to the estimators and we have some class, uh, that will be, uh, love a joint meeting in May.
Yeah. And so, um, the school building committee is going to meet on the seventeenth, I think, Joe. And then the eighteenth is a meeting that we're adding to the school committee calendar. Which will be a joint meeting, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
So you guys can, I, I will figure out how to add a, a column here, but it's, you guys can put May eighteenth into your calendar. That's going to be an additional meeting here in May. Uh, Mike.
Yeah, um, well, I'm, I'm happy to talk at length about our warrants process. It looks like we have them twice. One of them is a wealth meeting. And then we have, uh, a warrants vacation and then we have one on the May tenth meeting.
Where, where would you like it?
I would say for now, April twelfth seems like a safe bet.
All right. And because it's, um, unfinished business, I'm going to put it down here.
So did we say May eighteenth?
May eighteenth is the joint meeting between the school committee and the school building committee. And that is when we will be voting on the school building committee's recommendation to do what, Joe? What's the language?
Oh, you got me at a loss here. I don't know the exact.
Right. Like, what's that report that they're doing in May?
I, I, I have to defer the super. I don't have to have it off the top of my head, but what we'll have in mid-May, and I apologize because I have this in my mind and I keep, you know, I think all the building committee members are aware of this, but perhaps the school committee is not aware of this. So what's happening is, is that right now KBA is involved, is in the process of finalizing the schematic. So what's happening is, is that right now KBA is involved, is in the process of finalizing the, uh, schematic design submission to the MSBA. What will happen is in, in mid-April, those plans will go to our es, their estimators to secure for the district the cost of the, of the new construction. What we will essentially be doing on, uh, the, the joint meeting in, in May is we will be approving the actual schematic design and the cost thereof for the voters of the district.
Great. Um, Joe, will that be virtual?
Well, that would be your, that your discretion, Madam Chair, you know, I'm thinking, now you think about it, it might be appropriate if we did it in person.
Okay, so I'm gonna leave it in person for now.
Okay.
Um, and these are all marked TBD because we haven't gotten the governor's approval yet, so we'll leave it like that for now. Um, and then on the eighteenth, we'll, we'll be asked to approve that recommendation. Okay.
Okay.
Oh. My children are all home, hush, I'm on a meeting, my dear. They just go home from Futsal, okay, any other things on the calendar that you wanna add, just jump in, I can't see any of you. Alright, so, not hearing anything, so I'm gonna stop sharing this. And, uh, the next item on our agenda is a motion to adjourn, can I get that motion?
So moved.
And I'll second that. And I'll take the vote for the adjournment, I say yes, Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Uh, Joe?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Did I get you, Mike?
You did, but I'll say yes again.
Yes, again, okay, great, I think I got everybody, so. Oh, Scott, thank you, I knew I missed somebody, thanks, Scott. Uh, so the meeting's adjourned, everybody, thanks so much for all your hard work.